Facing the flag with your right hand over your heart to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Tonight, in addition to the excitement with our school spotlight on Cherokee, we will be getting a report on inclusive practices here in District 67, and how our partnership with and membership in True North Educational Cooperative 804 supports that work and our students. Since 2014, District 67 has been working toward the mission of empowering all students to maximize their growth as learners and develop a balanced sense of self, steadfast resiliency, and deep respect for others, while also pursuing the vision of a district as an innovative learning community that educates without boundaries, where all students cultivate their minds, create enduring connections, and discover their passions. One of the key core values that drives this work is that every child has an incredible capacity to learn, and the job of educators is to create an environment that maximizes each student's growth, including the willingness to take risks and learn from mistakes. Inclusive practices are about making sure that when we say we want to empower all students to learn and grow, and that every child has the capacity to do so, we truly mean it, own it, and live it. It means that every student belongs in our learning community and should be given access to all we have to offer. Barriers and obstacles to learning must be identified and removed in addition to providing supports for learning. All students are unique, and every student that walks in our doors has strengths, talents, needs, and challenges. Some are more visible than others, some are identified immediately, and others take time to uncover and know. All students struggle, all students learn, and all students grow. It is always my hope as a parent, educator, and board member that all students feel valued, successful, and a part of what happens in our schools. To ensure that, our learning communities need to work for everyone. For our teachers, staff, and administrators, this work requires deep commitment, collaboration, and creativity. Educators must be willing to embrace the learning and growth opportunities students provide them in the form of planning, problem-solving, and figuring out how to support and push all students while removing barriers so they can learn, grow, and be challenged. They cannot do this work alone. To create this kind of learning community involves lots of teamwork, collaboration, and shared ownership, as well as a strong guaranteed and viable curriculum. Again, really challenging work. I have seen our staff, teachers, and leaders embrace this work over the last seven years, and I have watched our partnership with True North change, grow, and thrive. Instead of seeing the cooperative only as a resource when a student is in crisis or we don't have the in-house expertise needed to serve a particular student, we see them as partners in the quest to build a system that meets the needs of all its learners in ways that allow everyone to be a part of our shared learning community. Every student in our schools benefits from the work being done around inclusive practices, and our teachers, staff, and administrators also grow as educators engaging in this critical work. I am grateful to our staff, teaching assistants, teachers, specialists, coaches, administrators, and True North partners for their commitment to every learner, every day. Thank you. May I just say, as you're getting ready to get started, we are so excited to have you here tonight. Thank you for joining us. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Montgomery, community members. I am so honored to be here tonight. I am Kate Kavanaugh, principal at Cherokee, and I am here with all of my members of the Student Leadership Team and two wonderful teachers, Mrs. Lassard and Mrs. Freeland. We are going to highlight some of the work that we have been doing so far this year that's connected to one of our school improvement goals around building a positive school community and providing social-emotional security for all of our students at Cherokee. This is also connected to our district milestone of achieving significant academic, but also that social-emotional growth for every student. I am going to turn it over to our Student Leadership Team members to share more about how we are working toward this goal as a school community.
Well, hello. I'm Anna Freeland. I teach second grade at Cherokee, but I've also taught science with many of these students here. And we are excited to tell you about what we are doing as a Cherokee community. One of the things that we are working on is really having a monthly focus for helping us develop our characters. We've really, as a foundations team, been very strategic and intentional about choosing the kinds of things that we're working for. We've been looking at the castle standards. We've been taking a look at timing throughout the year and what would be appropriate in terms of focus. In September, we were focusing on kindness. In October, we were shifting our focus to respect. And then now, coming up in November, we'll be looking at citizenship and how to really become a good citizen and what that looks like.
Hi, I'm Karina Lassard. I teach second grade at Cherokee. And each focus at our monthly all-school assemblies are introduced with things like slideshows and videos and questions and answers and even read-alouds. Each focus is reinforced in the classroom throughout the whole month.
One of the ways that we do that is through our Cheetah Paw system. We have Cheetah Paws that on the front have our paw and on the back have our three, like, tenants of behavior to be safe, respectful, and responsible. With a Cheetah Paw comes great responsibility. Students are working towards these focus goals, but they're also working on being respectful, responsible, and safe citizens. When you earn a Cheetah Paw, teachers are extremely, what's the word? Intentional about explaining why you get one. So if you get a Cheetah Paw, you should know what you did that earned that Cheetah Paw.
So we have some key SEL practices. The key practices this year are the Calm Corner in each classroom, as well as daily class meetings. These practices give students a safe place to go when they need to calm their bodies and calm their minds, and the class meetings encourage community each day.
I met with our Student Leadership Team members last week, and I asked them some open-ended questions about these areas: the themes, our monthly assemblies, the Cheetah Paws, class meetings, Calm Corner. And I had very open-ended questions, and we're going to play a video in just a second, and you can hear a little bit more about how these have all impacted them this year. This is not scripted, completely out of their mouths, and it was quite amazing.
I go to the Calm Corner with some feeling frustrated. I use the tools to help me then help I come out of the Calm Corner. Calm.
The Calm Corner changes my mood.
The Calm Corner makes me feel better after a rough time of recess.
Class meetings help me learn about classmates.
Whenever I have a class meeting, I always feel happy and really fun.
I enjoy the games in the class meeting.
Class meetings can bring other people together and help them make friends.
Class meetings make learning joyful.
I think they did a pretty great job. Thank you for having us tonight. I think we are well on our way to meeting our goal this year, and it has been a great start to the year, and look forward to the rest of the year with this wonderful team. Thank you. Picture? We're going to take a picture with you all before you leave. Where would you like them, Melissa? Do you want them down in front, since they're a little shorter? Yeah. Will you all make a front row for us? Thanks. You can go all the way across. Oh, you want, you can, that's, you can mix it up. Go ahead. But maybe some of us move down there.
Keep moving this way.
A few people move, yep. Just spread out. We all want to be blocked by your lovely faces. Thank you.
Good job, you guys.
So do we want to test and see if this, oh yeah, that's working. Okay. I don't have to anymore. Mine apparently had a little moment. Next up, our superintendent's report. Ooh. I just noticed the new screen. I like that.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not taking this personally, just so we're, just so I'm saying it out loud. Okay. Tonight Superintendent's Report is going to cover four topics. The first will be just a quick update on a conference I attended and was able to present on our Portrait of a Learner. Then I will move into an update about strategic planning, talk about the Let's Talk that are on the horizon. There's two different programs that are on the horizon. And then finish with just a little bit of gratitude, and actually, I have a video as well, compliments of Mrs. Oakley about the Grateful Market. So here we go. Some of you know that I was invited to attend the Patel Conference in Houston to talk about our Portrait of a Learner process. And the title of the presentation was Leveraging Your Portrait of a Graduate and Strategic Plan to Advance the Vision. I had the privilege of presenting with the Chief Academic Officer from Patel for Kids, and our presentation had three goals that were, that are outlined on the screen below. My story, or the element that I provided, was sharing our story among the work we did between '65, '67, and '15, as well as experience with how we are looking at our strategic planning process. There was approximately 50 people in attendance, and there were people who had done the portrait. There are people who have not done the portrait. There are people who've done strategic planning and who have not, and everything in between. So it was a lively discussion where I would share the work we were doing. Then we would break into small groups, share the work they're doing, and we were learning from each other in this session. I attended numerous other sessions, but I was proud that was able to highlight the work that was done here. It's always an honor when we are featured at the national level, and "we're being invited" is also an extra feather in our cap to say that we are doing great work, and our story should be celebrated and shared with many other districts across the country. I was also asked to join the Ed Leader 21 Advisory Committee as a part of the work that we are doing in this, in these districts. So I, we talked about this a little previously on a different topic, but I continue to and look at ways to become involved in educational leadership, both within the district and outside of the district, at the state and the national level. Moving in, as a great segue, is our strategic planning work, which is underway right now, and that is bringing our portrait to life. There are three meetings that are on the books right now. There may be a fourth one. That is yet to be determined. However, the first one occurred on October 6, and the second one is occurring on November 3. The portrait work we did collectively, there were 150 people among all three districts. The strategic planning process is unique to '67, and there is a separate strategic planning process happening simultaneously with '15. There are approximately 50 stakeholders in each design team, 50 for '67, 50 for '15, plus or minus 10, we'll call it, based on the district and who is showing up. The first meeting included a SWOT analysis. So we looked at what we were doing exceptionally well, and then opportunities for us to improve, and then also looked at some threats or some barriers to that improvement. So we want to get to X, but we think that there are things in place that are going to prevent us, or we think could be problems on that journey. It was a robust conversation with 50 people in the room. We did it not only in a small-group fashion, but we collected individual responses, and we had well over 300 individual responses on how those stakeholders were viewing our progress. And remember, it's from students to staff members, to, to community members, with and without children in the district, and civic leaders as well. So we had a nice cross-section, same type of representative group that we had in the portrait. The goal is that we, I would present a five-year strategic plan that's updated to all of you at the February meeting, acknowledging that we do not have a January meeting scheduled intentionally, so. That is the district-wide initiatives or roadmap, but I did want to take a moment and talk about the school improvement plans or the SIP goals that are happening at each building level. There is a separate SIP plan for each of the elementaries, as well as Deer Path. And what I have presented to you is the themes, the common themes between all the buildings. I think that's important for you as board members at the 30,000-foot view. What are the individual buildings working on and how it's hanging together correlated to our STRAT plan? So there are four areas, excuse me, three areas within the strategic plan that is where we're focused right now. One is inclusive practices, second is pedagogy, and third is behavioral systems of support. You heard behavioral systems of support in real time with the Cherokee presentation, with the Cherokee Paws, and how that is, as well as Calm Corners and classroom meetings. All of the work that Dr. Kavanaugh just shared is, is not by happenstance. It's directly aligned to the SIP, which is directly aligned to the STRAT plan. Building leadership teams, just to give you an idea of this process, building leadership teams review data from the previous year in July and August, and then come together in the early fall and finalize the individual SIPs for each building in October. And in the past, we've shared, each building, principals got up and given you an individual report. We're taking a slightly nuanced approach this time to give you a higher viewpoint of some of the goals that are, we're working across, across all buildings, regardless if it's Cherokee, Sheridan, Everett, or DPM. And you can see those areas listed on the screen.
Can I just ask one real quick question about that? Because I noticed that increasing overall reading proficiency and growth is a priority area for all schools. Is, and, and that math is not singled out in the same way. And I'm just wondering, is that a result of something that we're seeing in terms of test scores and the need for improvement there?
Absolutely. So that is an identified area of focus for us, and that is why it is listed out. The, we're not seeing the same concerns in math, and we made changes to math curriculum last year, specifically in grades six through eight. So there is a, less of a need to put energy in that and invest it more in reading in our full ELA overhaul. Which is, to give you a reminder on that, and, Annie, you heard more, and Suzanne, whoever was in the Education Committee, the intent is still to bring a recommendation to the spring, or in the spring, to the Board of Education for a new curriculum resource. Remember, the resources don't define the classroom. The resources support the pedagogy that's happening in the classroom, but there is a full ELA reading review that is underway right now. And if you have any detailed conversations or questions about that, Jeff or I can help you understand that, or come to the next Ed Committee, because it is the bulk of the conversation right now about the work that's being done there. Annie, I don't want to glaze over this, so if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Know that in the weekly update, you will get the, a report from Michelle Shin to give you more supporting evidence, as well as the individual SIP plans of each building, and you can do a deeper dive, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them in the future. Community conversations, we have been working tirelessly over the last year and a half on how to engage our community and give them opportunities to come talk to us outside of the podium at the board meetings. And I think that initiative is working based on what we're seeing right now and the topics that we're addressing. There are two upcoming events. One is on November 3 at 7:00 PM, and that's our first Let's Talk at the district level. And this is coming from concerns that we heard from the community around the topics of executive functioning, curriculum questions around ELA, how we're addressing post-learning gaps. Our data right now, post-pandemic learning gaps, our data right now is showing that we are, as of last year, back at pre-pandemic levels. So there was an article in the Wall Street Journal today, I think, about nationwide reading and math scores decreasing over the pandemic on the NAEP test. We do not give the NAEP test, but I want to reassure folks that right now, while reading scores and math scores continue to be a focus, last year, the students, the families, and the staff were able to get to the pre-pandemic level. Is that where we want to be? No. But am I most grateful that we are recovered in terms of that data point? It's a resounding yes. We are going to be diving deeper on what layers of support we're offering, what curriculum we're looking at, and how we're, how we're taking a close look at executive functioning. Those will be just some of the topics that are covered. Remember that the Let's Talk are one-hour segments, in-person for the district level. Questions are solicited ahead of time, and we try to hit as many of them as we can in as an hour. But our commitment to, like, I am Dr. McHugh, very Dr. McHugh-esque, he's the time police. And in this situation, and only in this situation, do I directly adhere to that one-hour time limit. We're trying something new at the building level, which is a Let's Talk with the Principals, and this is going to be for Cherokee, Everett, and Sheridan. And this is an online environment, and this is talking around, or this is focused on another topic of interest, which is K-4 behavior, and how we are working to give our students the tools that they need to be successful in one of those goals that you're seeing in the SIP and the strategic plan, as well as what you heard tonight. Questions about upcoming community opportunities to engage in conversations about what we're doing in the classrooms.
Real quick one, just a clarification on that. So back to pre-pandemic levels for as far as test scores are concerned. I know it's kind of a semantics thing, but is that an individual or grades? The grade levels are testing where they should be? Or is it an individual where they're now back to where they should be at their certain, whatever grade they're now at?
Yes, so the, yes, that does make sense. So the overall scores are in line with, so if they're, if you have a percentage of X we're achieving at each level, that relative percentage has been met in the grade band of last school year that is being, that was being tested. So our seventh-grade students are being, achieving at the rate in which our seventh-grade students were two years ago. So, and remember, this is a cumulative average, so there are still So, there still are individuals that we are addressing gaps with and that's one of the topics of here. Great, you're pre-pandemic, but my kiddo is still struggling in A, B and C. What are you doing? And that's what we're hoping to reassure folks of what layers we have in support for our students regardless of where they're achieving at.
Thank you.
You bet. And there was something else, forgive me, that I was just going to say about the Let's Talk series. And it is gone. I have not had another cup of coffee this evening. I should have. So, if I remember it, I'll come back to it, forgive me. The other topic, which is probably the one I care about the most, is sharing appreciation. There have been a couple of key things that I just want to highlight. And one of them is Principal Appreciation Month. That is, these are pictures of our team. And I would say this, and I said it this morning at a meeting and several times this week, we have the right people in the right places. And I shared this at a meeting that if you look at our elementary principals, all three of them were central office employees, district leaders, that have self-selected a desire to run a building. That very rarely happens, that we have sages that are expressing a desire that they can make the biggest impact on kids at the building level. So, I am thrilled about the elementary leadership and then I will put a "and," a huge "and." I'm thrilled about the new leadership at DPM. The climate and the culture that I experience when I'm walking through that building is vastly different than what we've experienced in the past. And I think that we are moving in the right direction with the building that I heard the most concerns about or desire to have conversations around climate and culture regardless of the stakeholder group that I heard from in last school year. So, they should be celebrated. They're doing great work and I couldn't be prouder of all of them. The Grateful Market, there's a video on this and I'm going to show it because it has all the facts, so forgive me for not reading the facts. I just want to let you look at the video and see what these communities did on October 16th. So, here are some pictures from it, but I think the video does the most justice and it's a minute and 20 seconds. So, I know all of our attention spans are limited, especially mine, so I'm speaking for myself, so bear with me. I think you'll enjoy it. The community should be exceptionally proud of the work they have done and I hope this is a tradition that lasts for many years to come. That concludes my superintendent's report for you tonight and thank you for giving me the opportunity to share these items with you.
Thank you. We now come to our first opportunity for public participation. At this point in this evening's agenda, we would give an opportunity for public comment, limited to comments related to this evening's meeting agenda items only. Seeing that we have no members of the public here, we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is reports and discussions. And our report this evening is on inclusive practices and the True North partnership. So, Joanne, take it away.
And I need to use the mic, right? For the people at home, for the audience at home, okay. Last time I was tied to the wall and that did not work well for me. So, I will stand here and manage something in both hands tonight. So, I want to talk tonight about our inclusive services and our True North partnership. And Suzanne, thank you for the nice welcome and warm in the setup tonight. So, I'm just going to spike it here. So, I want to start with a little bit of the basics here because not everyone is aware of this when it comes to special education. The people who know, know, and then everyone else is like, wait, what? So, I just want to go back and give a little bit of background here. And it starts with the federal law that we have to follow and that is IDEA or the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And what that act says is that as a public institution, we are required, we have to guarantee a free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities. Part of that law talks about least restrictive environment, or LRE. And what that really means, I've got the wording listed there, but to the maximum extent appropriate that we have to provide students with disabilities education alongside their non-disabled peers. And the reason that the law states that is, one, we know that students do best when they are with their peer models. Kids do better when they're with everyone else and the research really supports that. We have over 30 years of research that shows when we maintain high expectations, when we give students access to general education, that we get better outcomes. So, I want to just emphasize that special education services are not a place. They're not a room. They're not a place you go to. They're something that can come to the student, to the child. And that there's no research that supports that providing a segregated education is really impactful and the way to go. So, services, these are actually all the services that for a student with a disability, they may need or require in order to access a free and appropriate education. So, there is a long list here and every one of these, almost every one, requires specialized training and specialized certification. And so, at any given time, we could have a student present with this need, show up and move into our district and we're responsible as the LEA to provide that service for that child. This is part of why we have a partnership with a co-op because finding these are like finding the unicorn, especially now in our, it's hard to find qualified staff, teachers, let alone the unicorn. And so, our partnership also allows us to partner and contract for the services that we may not need a full-time person or adapted PE teacher. And so, when we need smaller parts of something, it's even harder to find those. And so, what we do as part of the co-op is purchase what we need and then other districts kind of share in that cost and get what they need also. So, keep going on here. So, I spoke a little bit about the least restrictive environment. And so, I just want to talk through a little bit in general about what that least restrictive to most restrictive environment is. For a general education, that's where the majority of our students are receiving their services and many of them have special education services that are a part of and delivered in that classroom. And so, that's really where a big focus of ours is, is the district. Some students are still removed from their classroom and receiving services in a special education classroom or studying with other peers who have similar disabilities and they're receiving that specially-designed instruction. Again, these are the two areas as a district that we support and focus on. Sometimes we have students where the needs are so significant or great that we don't have the ability or resources to support them within the four walls of our school district. And so, that's where, again, the special schools, True North provides that service as well. So, we have a very small number of students who require those, that kind of level of service, but we do have a few students who utilize that. And so, they're attending, you may have heard Arbor Academy or North Shore Academy. Those are some of the schools within True North. And then, as we go along, the continuing to more restrictive would be homebound where a teacher or a service provider is serving the student within their home and then a hospital and residential setting. So, where are our students receiving their services? This data was pulled from our school report card, so this is based on the 21, 22 school data. And it shows the majority of students are receiving their services in the general education classroom. So, nearly 80% of our students identified with a disability are spending 80% or more of their day in the general education classroom. As you kind of go along, you can see that separate facility. As I mentioned before, there's a really small number of students who are not here currently within our four walls, but receiving those services and supports in another location. When you look comparatively, so our peer districts and the state, we're way above where the state average is, yes. And even compared to our peer districts, and note, this is what the state sees our peer districts, we are still above that. Compared to our member districts, they're averaging about 71% and the 80% or more. So, again, we are really doing well in this area. And a lot of it is the way that we've aligned the resources we have and the supports and the collaboration we have with True North. So, Suzanne spoke to this earlier. Tonight, our strategic plan goal one, inclusive practices, we've been working on this for several years now and that partnership with True North has really enabled us to serve the students the way we do. So, I'm going to just talk a little bit more about what exactly True North is providing. So, currently, they provide professional learning to all staff. So, we have input in the professional learning that they provide across those member districts and we definitely utilize those services. So, currently, right now, we have all, a cross-section of all staff receiving the training through Safe and Civil Schools with the Foundation's work. Previously, it was the CHAMP's training. We have adaptive schools and training for teachers who need more professional learning around supporting students with high levels of need in their general education classrooms. And then, more recently, the state has new requirements around restraint and timeout. And so, True North is providing some of the professional learning that we're required to provide to staff around that as well. In terms of those service providers that I mentioned before, we utilize them for our occupational and physical therapists, our assistive technology specialists and our adaptive PE teacher. And then, this is really my favorite one, their coaching services, because it's something that people don't necessarily understand, what is that? What would that be? But they're a key piece in helping support our teams and our schools in keeping kids in our schools. So, when we have students with really significant needs, whether it's behavioral or academic, the True North coaches have specialized training to support at that level. Some of them have a BCBA background, so really intense training around behavior and behavior change. And they're working with our teams and supporting students in their classrooms so that we can grow the skills of our teachers to better support students and also our natural support as we have attrition through our system that you naturally do have in any organization. And then, the last one, as I mentioned before, is those specialized programs such as Arbor Academy. And then, so, really, it's, together is really something that we are benefiting from their services and we're stronger together. So, how does that translate down to students? What does that look like for all of our students, not just those with disabilities? And I want to highlight something that is a little bit more recent, which is the occupational therapy support in our early childhood and kindergarten classrooms. So, when our OTs come in, they're all, they're supporting students with specialized instruction, those who have those services in their IEPs. But they're also working and collaborating with those teams of teachers, providing services within the classroom. So, the teacher's skill level is increasing specifically around that fine motor development and sensory regulation. And in addition to that, other students in the classroom are receiving incidental benefit because they're there in the room, they're seeing what the adults monitoring, they might be a part of that group with their peer. And so, it's not just one student benefiting, it's all students benefiting. So, I've already mentioned that access to professional learning is increasing the skill level of our staff. And the last part I want to point out is, this is something that may not be recognizable to you as a board, but I think our district leaders, those who interact with True North, understand that, you know, we're a smaller community in Lake Forest and True North provides us a connection to a broader community. They're in 18 different school districts and they have really high-quality professionals. So, when we're interacting with them, when we're learning from them, we're benefiting from their knowledge base, which is a collection of the expertise that they have across those 18-member districts. And then, in addition to that, the resources that are in the broader North Shore area as well. And so, that to me is something that is invaluable, especially for someone coming into a new community and organization that at the, you know, the click of an email, I can have access and learn about resources that I wouldn't have otherwise known about. So, that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm just wondering whether through our partnership with True North, I know that sometimes, you know, it's very frustrating to be a parent with a child who has a disability and the schools and parents may disagree over what services are appropriate for a given child and which can be, you know, I know is part of the IEP process. And I'm wondering if as a result of our partnership with True North, we have access to better resources and therefore maybe we have less of those disagreements? Does that question make? I mean, I know you probably don't have numbers, but I just want your general sense about it.
I mean, I could tell you what, I, it's hard to answer that question. So, I think we provide a caliber of services because the staffing that we have and the people who are working often come with previous experience or they have a stronger support network. So, when they're presented with challenges, they have other resources to lean on before we get to a place where we're in conflict with a parent. If that makes sense.
You described 80% of True North is being, or the students are being served within our classrooms. How does that look? Like, is there an OT coming into our classrooms from True North or how does that look?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, I'll explain a little bit. There's a lot that goes into that. A lot of it you don't see because it's collaboration outside of the times that we're in the class with students. And so, what it looks like is, I'll describe what it looks like in early childhood. In early childhood, that person is a member of that team. They come in, they're, they may be supporting in a whole group situation, providing cues or working on regulation with students. They may be leading the group around that topic for all students, but it was designed to target a particular student and their goal and need. It also looks like working in small groups. So, if they're working on a particular skill, the team there has, kind of like we do in our, in our reading classrooms, the students are in small groups. They're one of the providers that is at the table with students, working directly with them and as students rotate stations, they're just a number, another person focused on a student-related task in their area and delivering that service to the student with an IEP and also working with an IEP and also working with other students on just their general skills as well. So I think part of what we do is design things so that it's not, so that it's integrated. So it's not someone going off to the side in the back of the room, that we try to incorporate it into the whole of what we're doing in the classroom.
And the amount of work it takes to make that look natural is incredible. So the ability for students to feel as if they are a part of the community regardless of ability, without the pomp and circumstance, is paramount for the developmental process for students. And being able to offer that here is not, I would argue from my lens, is not common. It's something that we should be really proud of.
Yeah, I agree.
I just have one more question. With True North, if a family decides they do not want to go to one of these satellite schools, they just don't want, they don't like it, they want to go somewhere else, because of our collaboration or our co-op, do they have to go to a True North school or could they choose to find their own resource if we couldn't meet their needs?
So I think typically when you're in those situations, there, there's a lot of anxiety and emotion around that. So part of the process is visiting other schools. So when you're talking about outplacement, it may not just be one place, but I can tell you from experience, and this is coming from another district where I did this, we utilize other programs in the Lake County area and we were in a member district, but we started knocking on True North's door all the time because that's where our kids got the best service. So I think we're very fortunate that they have a long history of providing high-quality services. And what's happening there versus what I've experienced happening in other places is not the same. So it, it, yes, there can be options, but I think I've found in my own experiences that that's the better option.
There would be discussions across, I'm building on this. So if you have an IEP team meeting and you talk about the least restrictive item or placement and the, or environment, forgive me, and the family may disagree with what the team's decision is, then there is an appeal process that is regulated through the rights of those parents. And that process then can be resolved through a whole host of ways. But there are situations where the parent could disagree with what the team is saying and then the appeal would happen.
I guess I was just trying to get to our, the cost benefit for our district. If we're going to have a million dollars into the program and then you have a family that's disagreeing with us, we want to, you know, have some idea that I fully anticipate it's the best program, it's a North Shore program.
So if there's, just to clarify, if there's an individual, we would pay a tuition, whether we pay that tuition as a part of, like, so are that, the numbers that we were talking about earlier in workshop include membership but also tuitions? If we have a student who goes to one of those programs, we pay that tuition. If we have a student who goes to a program somewhere else, we pay the tuition to somewhere else. So it isn't a matter of we've paid for something that we're not getting. We would pay the tuition only to the place where the student goes and the partnership doesn't restrict us from having other outplacements. There's no bound to do it. And we aren't prepaying for things and then not taking advantage of them. Does that help? Okay.
And it would also often cost more if we're going through the process and they're picking another placement because of a disagreement within the team. We would still be responsible for paying for that regardless of where it ends.
I have a quick question. I know you mentioned just the resources to staff and teachers. Are there any available resources to parents?
There are. I did not mention that. I'm sorry, I, that was like the one piece. I see you nodding vigorously. Yes, they do offer actually many programs for parents. They have a newsletter that comes out monthly sharing some of that information. And then for, in addition to that, for students who are attending their programs in particular, there's additional resources for families embedded in that programming. So there are things that all families can access and then there's extra for those who are attending those programs.
And the professional development that's offered, that all of our staff have access to, all of the parents in our community could have access to any of that as well, is my understanding of the way that it actually works. I don't know how many parents actually access it, but I know that it's available for parents as well. The APS Board, their parent board, does a lot of education within their meetings and I'm pretty sure they are open and welcome to any parents from any member district participating, engaging, and learning more.
If I could, just want to say thank you.
Yes.
One of the topics I had a question on.
Yeah.
Not as completely as aware as I should be, but I would just want to say that I'm very proud to be part of the district and the services that you provide and the services that we as a district provide in such a way. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Awesome. Thank you very much. Well, thank you.
Enjoyant's been on the road show of board presentations, so we will give her a break next month.
Well, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to me.
Next up, we have our board committee report, so I will start with the education committee. The education committee met on Thursday, October thirteenth, and the committee was joined by Vale Keizer, Megan Eigenrau, Sam Paulson, Dr. Montgomery, Denise Galazianos, and Becky Saxana. Since it was the first committee meeting, we spent some time on introductions and then we dug right into reviewing the six-eight illustrative math rollout that has happened. As you may recall, we adopted a new curricular resource for our six-eight math program. Illustrative math was selected as the best-fit resource for our district. And Becky Saxana, the D sixty-seven math coach, provided a brief overview of the curriculum review process that resulted in the adoption of this resource. Phase one was completed in twenty-twenty-one. Phase two was completed at the end of, in twenty-twenty-two. And at this point, the, we are in phase three, which is implementation. And the work is grounded in an idea that students learn mathematics as a result of solving problems. Mathematical ideas are the outcomes of the problem-solving experience rather than elements that must be taught before the problem-solving. And she talked about a model where students struggle with the problems first and then they are given the direct instruction around the tools that they may need that are new to approach those problems in a more efficient way. She shared that staff, including math teachers, learning behavior specialists, principals, and district administrators have been and will continue to be engaged in a three-pronged approach to professional learning and job-embedded support throughout the year, this being the first year of implementation. They will have direct support in using the resource itself, which started in August. They will participate in a four-part series around implementation of the resource, focusing on problem-based instruction, inviting student thinking, enhancing access to mathematics and assessment and teaching units. And then ongoing support will also be provided internally via time with job-like peers, one-page or highlights to help staff prioritize their instruction, department meetings, building coach support, and district coach support as well. Ms. Keizer mentioned that she has already had the opportunity to observe lessons in a number of our math classrooms and shared that this resource has built-in opportunities for students to engage in productive struggle in advance of direct teaching. And it is fully aligned to the focus, rigor, and coherence of the math standards being taught. Embedded within the curriculum are mathematical language routines that support academic language development. Materials are designed to support students in building positive mathematical identities while participating in collaborative learning opportunities. Teacher materials intentionally support teachers in developing, refining, and reflecting on instructional practice to improve student outcomes. The three overarching goals for implementation this year are teaching and assessing with fidelity, working together as a collective and collaborative team, and reflecting on student impact. Ms. Keizer added that so far, teachers are embracing the work, appreciate the support that's being provided, and are asking great questions. Data collection to monitor progress will be gathered in the forms of teacher feedback, student feedback, and of course, assessment outcomes. Ms. Saxana also shared that some of the questions that have arisen thus far, and the committee then spent time sharing ideas and asking additional questions and providing feedback. During the discussion, one of the hot topics was how does this support parents and families in supporting their kids? And so the district will be doing some more communication to help teachers to connect parents and families to the built-in home communication and supports that are available in the resource. Next up, we talked about K eight reading and the reading review that's going on. My contacts are shifting, I apologize. The K eight reading review is currently in phase two. Denise Galazianos, our District sixty-seven literacy coach, grounded the group in what had been done during phase one, which included both quantitative and qualitative data analysis, a deep review of research and best practices that engaged our K eight staff in learning academies to ground everyone in the current understandings from the science of reading and reflecting on District sixty-seven's beliefs around literacy. An initial needs assessment was conducted and the highlights of all of that work was shared broadly across the district to prioritize the work ahead. So in the report, I give you some of the phase one highlights that happened over the course of last year and then the phase two, the current work that's going on. The district is partnering with Nicole Stroop from the Regional Office of Education to gain clarity around our guaranteed and viable curriculum. The work is grounded in standards, assessment, and instruction, and the guaranteed and viable, viable curriculum should provide teachers with the guidance around what content to cover, allows time to teach the content, and gives students access to the content. And throughout the year, the teams will be prioritizing and unpacking the English Language Arts standards. They will be analyzing the rigor of the standards, referencing Webb's depth of knowledge to do that analysis, seeking to prioritize the standards that offer more leverage, endurance, and readiness to students while also ensuring vertical alignment across the grade levels. The purpose of this process is to make sure that students have access to high-quality resources and deep learning. Teachers have clarity around the learning expectations and the support needed to provide effective instruction for all, and high-quality assessments are available to ensure that the standards are being met. This work is going to help answer the questions, does our instruction align to the standards and do our assessments align to the standards? This work is engaging District sixty-seven staff, administrators across all buildings, as well as True North staff at each grade-level band. The findings from this work will be shared with the greater staff during the November Institute Day. And the next question is, do the resources we have support the guaranteed and viable curriculum effectively or are other resources needed? And we will be coming back to you as the, these teams figure out those answers. So included in your report is a list of all the people involved in this work across the district and the timeline in which it is going to be proceeding. So another example of how that partnership is affecting and impacting instruction for all. A quick coaching update is how we wrapped up this meeting. While this is the second year with building coaches and DPM, it is the first year with building coaches in our K four buildings. And Ms. Keizer provided us with a quick update about coaching across the district. She has a significant background in this type of professional support for teachers and is thrilled to be in a system that is providing it across all buildings. She shared that the coaching team is supported through monthly meetings with our consultant, Pam Radford. They have already attended coaching training offered through True North. They are focused on how to best support staff, building relationships, supporting a sense of belonging, and work in the area of SEL, and will then be transitioning and moving toward more academic support. She is confident this work will have a positive impact on student outcomes as it is the key to providing job-embedded support and for instructional growth. At each of our meetings, we open it up to any other topics that people would like to hear about in the future. And members shared that they would love to hear more about plans for writing and the review of writing in the district as well as how learning gaps are being addressed. So some of that may be addressed in the Let's Talk that's coming up, so I would encourage people to attend that. Our next education committee meeting is on Thursday, November seventeenth. Any questions? Otherwise, that concludes our education committee report. Next up is finance and operations.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Sorry. In the illustrative math, one good question that I saw that I like to put for that is that you had in the writing and reading section, so I can do this with one hand while holding the mic. Do the resources have support? No, that's not the question. Does our instruction align to the standards? So with, what's it called? Illustrative math, what are the standards that are being set for that? So what is the word standards? Does it align with our standards? Does the standards like, after they graduate from eighth grade, the standard is to succeed in ninth grade in high school? Or is it a standard that we set internally for eighth graders?
They're the, they're national standards for math based on math proficiency. And math, to me, is one of the most straightforward because the standards are very cut and dried and this curriculum aligns one hundred percent with that.
For the grade level?
For the grade level, correct.
And then when we transition to high school, how is that transition succeeding, not succeeding? How are we doing?
This is the first year of it.
Yeah, okay.
We don't anticipate there being any bumps. And we, when we, when we went through this process, Jeff Summy, who's the math instructional director, we brought him on to make sure that if we go with illustrative, what impact is this going to have on the high school? They now are looking at their curriculum, which they weren't, it's we, I'm part of them now too.
You are.
We are now going to be looking at our curriculum for that we previously weren't. But no matter what, we foresee not only a smooth alignment, we think our kids are going to be far better off. This is a much stronger resource, we feel, and much stronger pedagogy than what we had before.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Other questions?
Good news.
Yeah. Great. All right. Finance and operations.
The finance and operations committee met on October fourth at West Campus. Beginning with our public comment, Lisa Olson joined us to share an update on food service. She provided information on what was going well and what still can be improved. During the rest of the meeting, we focused on the Consumer Price Index, also known as CPI, and the projected five-year plan. Under the topic of CPI, Jen shared that the CPI and the upcoming levy are going to look different this year. CPI, again, the Consumer Price Index, is at seven percent, or was it seven percent at the time of our meeting, which is higher than ever. The annual tax levy, which is based on CPI or five percent, whichever is lower, so in this particular model, it looks like the five percent will be lower, again, looking different than in years past. In addition, we talked about five-year planning. Presentations were provided on technology plans, communication plans, education plans, and we had to defer the Building and Grounds presentation for their plans to the next meeting. All the presentations were excellent and they're included in the report tonight, which you can access as well as the minutes of the meeting. And again, the presentations are well worth reading. Our next meeting is December seventh at seven-thirty AM, West Campus, and everyone is welcome. Thanks.
Any questions for Alice? Seeing none, policy?
The policy committee has not met recently and we do have a bit of a to-do list now, so we will wait for Tiana's return to schedule one. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have liaison reports, and the first liaison report this month is True North. The Leadership Council met on October twelfth. I was not in attendance at this meeting. As you can see from the notes, we are working on some facilities planning, strategic planning. We also have a number of committees that work across member districts with representation. One is an Equity and Access for Inclusive Practices Committee, one is a Professional Learning Innovation Team Committee. All of the decisions that are made around what offerings will be available and how True North is going to do their work is usually grows out of committee work that has representation from the various member districts. So I can possibly field any questions on the report if anyone had any, or we can move on. But there's an example in here of a, of a committee where you can see the level of representation from across roles, responsibilities, and districts. Next up, we have our legislative liaison report.
Good evening. Thank you. Last month, IASB released the twenty-twenty-two
Last month, IASB released the 2022 Resolutions Committee Report. The Board tonight will take action to recommend our support or opposition for each one of the resolutions proposed. And in, I guess, the third weekend of November, our very own Presidente Sands will take our votes to forward and represent our Board, District 67. So, summation of each one of the proposed resolutions is attached to the report, and it's all part of the agenda here. And if any of you have any questions, it's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Spirit of 67 Foundation, Mr. Chun. No worries.
Okay. The September 29th Spirit Home and Garden Tour was a beautiful event. The event was gorgeous, and the homes and outdoor spaces were enjoyed by all whom attended. The event raised over $75,000 net funds, net funds, amazing, that will be granted back into our 67 schools. Thank you so much to all the volunteers, homeowners, donors, and community sponsors. Your generosity and commitment to our students is abundant and very appreciated. The crosstown donor challenge is heating up, with all four schools seeing over 50% of their families contributing to the annual fund. Everett is in the lead at nearly 70%. Our goal is to see each school reach their 80% goal or 70% goal by the end of this year, and thus earning a $1,000 discretionary grant for the buildings. That completes my Spirit Report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have our APT Executive Board Report. Jennifer?
The APT welcomed visiting author Erin Reynolds to all the elementary schools this October. Paws Per Patrick was rolled out in many of the buildings, and all the kids seeing those comfort dogs, I guess, was a sight to be seen. On October 18th, the APT, in conjunction with District 115's APT, the PTO of District 65, all got together and had a meeting about the role of a resource officer. They're going to have this series throughout the year, and the next one will be November 29th at 7 o'clock at the DPM Gym, and this unfortunately will be the topic of Run, Hide, Fight, and Active Shooter Protocols in Preparation, so, for parents. The APT also participated in the Grateful Market that we saw earlier tonight to help food insecurity in our neighboring communities, and we will be starting, the APTs will start the Food Drive, starting October 31st through November 4th, and each grade level will bring something, so look for your newsletters on that. And finally, the APT Digital Directory is now updated, and for those that are participating in the APTs, you can go online and get all that information. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next up, we have come to our Action Item portion of this evening's meeting, and we are going to start with the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent. May I have a motion to approve the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent as Whitney Draggert? Am I saying that properly? Okay. Whitney Draggert.
So moved.
Thank you, Carl. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alice. May I have a roll call? Is there any discussion before? Does anyone have any questions about this item? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
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 Next up, we have our SEIU contract for 2022 through 2027. May I have a motion to approve the Services Employee International Union contract for 2022 to 2027?
So moved.
Thank you, Carl. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a roll call? Oh, actually, are there any questions? Would we like a quick, maybe Jen or Carl, does either one of you want to just say a very few sentences about the gist?
I would like to thank Jen and Mike for taking part in negotiations with me, and of course, the entire SEIU negotiating team, which I think was the entire complement of SEIU. So, thank you for taking part in this and completing this in total. So, Jen, any comments?
Thank you for that, and of course, thank you, Carl, for his countless hours that he contributed as well. Just a brief synopsis of the actual contract. It is a five-year contract, following, I think, probably several other five-year contracts, which has been the norm with this group. I think it was pretty fair and reflective of the market and the changing labor conditions, and recognizing that and the dedication and service that we've seen from this particular unit of employees. We did address specific areas on some of our starting wages that we've had some difficulty hiring, or that we've experienced a little bit higher than average, or certainly higher than we would like turnover. So, you'll see that our lowest categories have been raised to an area that we think that we can attract and hopefully retain. The out-years, because this is a five-year contract, and, you know, the world's been a little crazy of late in regard to the actual economic outlook, that those out-years are tied to the CPI that Alice mentioned, which is the greatest component of our revenue source as well. So, making sure that we have a contract that actually moves kind of in step, or at least relationally, to that CPI was super important to us in a five-year contract.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions before we vote? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Bernhal?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, the next item on our agenda is the Contract Renewal for Allerton Hill. Our superintendent is asking that we table this item because some additional negotiations are taking place, and so, the contract that was presented to us may no longer be relevant, and there may be changes brought to us for our next meeting. So, may I have a motion to table the approval of the Contract Renewal for Allerton Hill Communication Support Action Item to the November Regular Board of Education Meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. And may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Bernhal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a waiving of a first reading and then a second reading for Policy 7270, Administering Medicines to Students. May I have a motion to approve waiving the first reading of Policy 7270, Administering Medicines to Students? So moved. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Does someone want to speak to this?
Jeff will speak to this, but this is something that we should have been included in the first reading. I mean, in our last policy discussions, there was a section that we needed to confirm. Is that right, Jeff? About administering medicine specifically to students that we missed. So, we recommend, as a policy committee, to waive the first reading and just move on to the second to approve that.
So, the lingering questions were answered. Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Did anyone after reviewing have any questions? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bernhal?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then, the approval of the second reading of Policy 7270, Administering Medicines to Students. May I have a motion to approve Policy 7270, Administering Medicines to Students?
So moved.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a call vote, please?
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Bernhal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tonight's consent agenda includes 10 items, and so, as a reminder, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. Would anyone like to remove any items from tonight's consent agenda?
Could we remove item number three from the consent agenda, please?
Yes. So, item number three is removed, and we will vote on that separately in a moment. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items this evening, including approval of disbursement, payroll, and financial statements, approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on fund balances, Miller Ratio Adjustment at the IASB Delegate Assembly, approval of the IASB recommendation to reject resolution on firearm dealer location at IASB Delegate Assembly, approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on capital grant fund for school buildings at IASB Delegate Assembly, approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on school safety fund at IASB Delegate Assembly, approval of IASB recommendation to reject resolution on involvement with candidates for public office at IASB Delegate Assembly, approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on mandates review committee at IASB Delegate Assembly, approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on financial contribution for school board elections at IASB Delegate Assembly, and approval of the Human Resources Report.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mrs. Bernhal?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have to return back to this pulled item, which was approval of IASB recommendation to reject resolution on alternative-fueled school bus funding at the IASB Delegate Assembly. Since it is stated that way, we will, I think, just vote on it.
You have to open it as a motion, motion open, and then we'll just kind of talk about it.
Yeah. So, may I have a motion to approve the IASB recommendation to reject resolution on alternative-fueled school bus funding at the IASB Delegate Assembly?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And now, let's have a conversation, and then we can do a vote on this one.
If I may, I'll quickly summarize it?
Sure.
So, this is a resolution really to provide, urge state and federal governments to provide funding to school districts where transitioning zero emission school buses or low emission school buses, if a district can afford to go to zero, and for green-charging infrastructure in order to reduce school, children's exposure to harmful pollutions, pollutions from diesel emissions. And IASB recommends to not adopt for a number of reasons, primarily with concern for rural districts, which don't have the infrastructure or ability, maybe long distances for buses to drive, and with a lack of clarity about funding, in particular, where that funding would be provided and pulled forward to really invest into this infrastructure and into the zero or low emission buses. My personal point, I would propose opposing their recommendation to not adopt. So, I do believe that pursuing alternative-fueled school busing is a benefit to us in general. So, I would be supportive of this resolution.
I agree with you, and I think, I take the point about some rural school districts and others may not be able to currently access alternative-fuel vehicles, but this resolution wouldn't require that. It would just empower the IASB to seek funding from federal and state sources to encourage alternative-fuel sources. So, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that. So, I'm with you, Carl.
I should note that this particular item doesn't apply to us because we contract out our school bus services, but...
So, as we move forward, if we...
We would vote nay.
Vote no to rejecting it. I will take that as an indication that you want me to vote to adopt it when I go and represent us as a delegate.
Voting yes or aye would support IASB to not support this resolution. Voting nay would oppose what IASB has written.
Right. So, if we vote in favor of the way our motion is written, I will vote against this at IASB. If we vote against the way this motion is written right now, I will vote in favor of this resolution at the delegation. I just want to make sure everybody knows what their vote is.
It's a great topic.
Right? Are we ready? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bernhal?
No.
Mr. Chun?
No.
Ms. Helms?
No.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Levert?
No.
Mrs. Sands?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We had, do I even say this here? Sorry, I have to get to my script. We had one FOIA request from Sheri Reed, Smart Procure, which is pending. This is our second opportunity for public participation, but as we have no one from the public with us, we will move on. Our announcements are that Tuesday, November 8th, is Election Day, so there is no school for students or staff. Friday, November 11th, no student attendance, and it is an Institute Day. And Tuesday, November 15th, is our next Board of Education meeting, coming right up here at West Campus, beginning at 7:00 p.m. Without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board Meeting for October 25th, 2022?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a voice vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Meeting adjourned.